Hello.
Hello.
Good afternoon. I'm going to call this regular meeting of the Committee of the Whole for Thursday, November 15, 2018, to order. My name is Andrea Jenkins and I am the Chair of this committee. And with me at the dais, we have councilmembers Palmasano, Johnson, Goodman, Ellison, Schrader, Councilmember Cunningham, Fletcher, Reich, and Gordon. Let the record reflect that we do have a quorum. And our agenda today, we have two discussion items, as well as the reports from our committees. And our first discussion item is, excuse me, the Strategic and Racial Equity Action Plan, or SREP, update, 2018, to receive and file an update on the background, current state, and next steps for the revised strategic and racial equity planning process. And I think we have presenter, or a couple of presenters, Andrea Larson and Joy Marsh Stevens from the City Coordinator's Office. Hello, Ms. Larson.
Hello. Good afternoon. I'm Andrea Larson, Director of Strategic Management in the City Coordinator's Office, here to provide the update on strategic and racial equity action planning. I'm joined by Joy Marsh Stevens, who leads the Division of Race and Equity, as well as Lisa Tabor has joined us as well. She's from Culture Brokers and is the consultant working on this effort. And then Micah Intermill, too, who's been, who's our Budget Director and has played an integral part in this as well. I want to start by reviewing the deliverables that will be an outcome of this process. We will be revisiting the city's vision and goals, complete planning around GARE's five recommended components of a racial equity action plan, and those include using disaggregated data, engaging diverse communities, looking at equity in our policies, diverse workforce and diverse spend, as well as complete strategic prioritization. And do all of this in an effort to align with our budgeting process and how we allocate our resources. We had an initial, initial and pretty ambitious plan to complete all of this work, to arrive at those deliverables this fall. As we've started the work, we can see, we have seen, that it's going to be more effective for this work to happen and move forward in phases. So what you see here is a visual that shows what we had originally planned to move forward, and then how we're adapting the process as we've started this work. The biggest change that you'll see is shifting the remaining work on policy and visioning into 2019. As you all know, we held a session on September 20th where all of you and the mayor really rolled up your sleeves and narrowed down to a smaller set of strategic priorities. This was significant progress toward our intended outcomes and further than we've gone in the past. I will say that this, what we needed to move forward for our operational planning in the fall that closely followed that session was a layer deeper to arrive at a set of strategic need statements that we just didn't have time to arrive at on September 20th. And so we've decided to shift some of that work into early 2019. However, we were able to use the time that we had set aside this fall with departments to focus on the internal aspects of the strategic and racial equity action planning. So you'll see in this, in this slide, that we have broken the work out and will be accomplishing the deliverables in stages. Joy can share, and will share more information about what we were able to accomplish this fall, as well as the specific next steps for all of you the rest of this year and into next year.
Good afternoon. So as Andrea mentioned, we've been focusing in these most recent weeks in that kind of middle phase for the last slide that we were just looking at, and the current work of the city. So looking at our internal operations, we're taking a lot of learnings from the Government Alliance on Race and Equity and the categories that they have around strategic and around racial equity planning, looking at things like how we spend our money, how we develop our workforce, how we engage community, how we look at data, and how we look at our policy areas, recognizing that the work that council and mayor started back in this, at the end of the summer in looking at policy areas, we're pushing those pieces forward, as Andrea stated, into 2019, but have taken advantage of this fall to look more closely at some of those internal operations. Again, how we spend our money, how we support our workforce, how we look at our engagement and how we use racially disaggregated data and the decision-making process. So we invited city staff from across all of our city departments to engage in what we called Operational Prioritization Sessions. They were two-day sessions for each of those different topics. All city departments were asked to participate, including department leadership, in coming to those sessions and helping us to get clearer on really defining what the actual statement of need was, what's the real opportunity for us to look at in our racial equity planning. And so in those four sessions, we were able to engage, on the spend session, about 16 departments were represented. For the workforce session, another 15 departments around engagement, 18 departments were represented. And we took a much more narrow focus, looking at the disaggregated data by really engaging those departments who have been working already on enterprise solutions around data. So that represented about six departments who were present with us. In the course of those sessions, we landed on strategic need statements around community engagement, specifically looking at how can we improve the capacity of our appointed boards and commissions to advance the city's racial equity work, recognizing that not all boards and commissions currently have a mandate around looking at racial equity, but that all of them, in many instances, are able to help advise the city on really critical decision-making around policy areas, and there's opportunities there for them to be helping us think about race in that process. Around disaggregated data, we're looking at how we can improve the use of racially disaggregated data for decision-making in the legislative process. And so how are we helping to think about the opportunities for our staff to be able to provide this racially disaggregated data and providing that information to you all as elected policymakers to help inform some of your decision-making? Around diverse spend, we're going to be looking at how we can increase the percentage of presence and of spend with racially and ethnically diverse for-profit suppliers across all of our city departments. That's a very narrow sort of, very specifically stated focus for us, as the real opportunity for us to make an impact is within that specific category of suppliers. Then lastly, with our diverse workforce, we want to be looking at how we can increase the retention of our people of color and indigenous people within the city workforce. So we've had those two days.
Excuse me.
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Stevens, we have a question or comment from Councilmember Cunningham.
Thank you so much. I just wanted to ask about the disaggregated data. One of, so it says racially disaggregated. I was wondering, do we have the capacity to be able to make it ethnically disaggregated so we're able to see within the black community, for example, separating between folks born in America versus folks who are African immigrants and being able to see the difference? Sometimes folks can be hidden within larger racial groups, so I was just curious about the capacity that there is to be able to do so.
Sure. Chair Jenkins, Councilmember Cunningham, the data that we're using is census tract data, and so we do have some limitations with regard to how finite we can get within that information. But in as much as we can be very specific within our data sets, we are striving to be as specific as possible across all of the different categories. So as we're looking at identifying what the actual problem areas are that we're addressing inside of these different threads or streams, we want to make sure that we're looking as specifically at what's the real opportunity.
Great, thank you. If there's anything about council support around that, to be able to get more of that more finite, the data, that would be, just let me know, because I think that's really important, because when we talk about Asian, we're talking about mom, we're talking about Chinese, we're talking about a large spectrum of folks, so I really appreciate that. Thank you.
Yep, absolutely.
And before you go on, Councilmember Schrader has a question.
No question. No, thanks. On the diverse workforce and on retention, does that also include promotion? I just want to make sure that everyone has the, that we're looking at, that everyone has the same opportunities.
Chair Jenkins, Councilmember Schrader, we are looking at a variety of different areas inside of retention, and as we get to, and we'll talk a little bit in the next slide around like what's coming up next and where those other detail elements are coming in, but specifically around retention, promotion is one of the factors that we're looking at. All right. So next steps, our mayor and city council can expect to see the first chapter of our SREP, that first chapter, yes?
Ms. Stevens, I'm sorry. I didn't recognize that we have a question or comment from Councilmember Gordon.
Thank you. I also wanted to ask about that diverse workforce one. I was a little bit surprised that recruitment's not in there. Are we saying that we are just fine with the percentages of people of color and indigenous people who are in the workforce, so all we have to do is worry about retaining them?
Chair Jenkins, Councilmember Gordon, we're not saying that we're necessarily fine on all of the different areas. The process that we used around the operational prioritization allowed us to look at, within each of these different strategic needs, identifying like what's the overarching enterprise process. Part of that process for workforce did look at how we're hiring, it looked at retention, and it looked at a variety of other factors. Through the process that we use, the participants were able to help identify what's the greatest opportunity, which doesn't mean that opportunity doesn't exist in other areas, but if we're looking at actually meeting our strategic need, which is really about diversifying our workforce and keeping our workforce diverse, part of the opportunity really did look at retention, being one of the key factors. So yes, we absolutely want to be thinking about hiring. We know that there's a lot of work that our HR department is currently doing around hiring and around recruitment of diverse candidates into the pool, but there's a greater opportunity based on our operational prioritization sessions to really look at how we're retaining those individuals when they get into the workforce. So not just hiring for the sake of hiring, but also making sure that they can stay and build a career here in the city.
I totally agree, and I appreciate that retention is really critically important. But if we aren't recruiting more, we're never going to actually reach the overarching goals that we've already set for ourselves to diversify the workforce. And hopefully, as part of a, overall racial equity action plan, recruitment's going to have to still be a piece of it. So I guess that's my concern, is are we going to get so narrowly focused that we're actually going to miss the big picture and the big goals that we have to be working for?
Yeah. So, yeah. So Chair Jenkins, Councilmember Gordon, that's a solid point, and one of the things that we're looking at within this process is also how are we doing some capacity building for our staff generally, around how do we think about opportunities to advance racial equity? We're looking at a very narrow focus here, but the idea is that the tools and the skills that we're gaining in this process, we can apply to a variety of different areas. We know that the same staff that's working with us around this general planning is also working with the Human Resources Department on other aspects of this work. So the idea is that we're both starting here, but not stopping here, so that as we see other opportunities across all of these different streams, we're able to still apply that same critical thinking to other parts of our work. Yep.
Just before you go on, I just want to note for my colleagues that we are using speaker management, too, so if you want to sign into that, I will try to be attentive and recognize you through that process. Thank you, Ms. Stevens.
So then, lastly, as I mentioned, we should, council and the mayor can expect to see the first chapter of the SREP on the December 5th COW meeting. At that time, we'll see more of those specific details around what the actual measures of success are looking like, what metrics are we going to be tracking, and what some of those initial, kind of high-level, department-level work is going to look like in association with meeting these specific outcomes and addressing these strategic needs. Prior to that December 5th meeting, we're anticipating providing a draft of that, of that initial chapter to council and to the mayor by the end of November. As Andrea mentioned previously, there will be some engagement in January 2000, beginning in January 2019, around finalizing mission and vision for our council and for our mayor, and then continuing to do that, that built upon the work that you already started back in August of this year around those policy areas that we want to be our strategic policy areas to think about for ongoing strategic and racial equity planning. We're anticipating that work starting in February 2019, as well as in early 2019, getting more finite and specific around what's our core service work for the city and what are things that are outside of that core service work. So both clarifying what's our strategic focus, what's our core work, and what sits outside of core. And that's it? Unless there's questions.
I'm sorry, Councilmember Cunningham.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I wanted to just get some clarification for the city vision and mission. Will that include the values, too?
Chair Jenkins, Councilmember Cunningham, yes. So that's all part of that one conversation.
Awesome, thank you.
Absolutely.
Are there other questions or comments? Seeing none, you know, I just want to acknowledge that this is a departure from our initial plan, and granted, that plan was very ambitious, but it's exciting that we are changing the way that we are doing strategic planning, and a part of that change means for us to be adaptive. And so far this year, we've accomplished quite a bit. We've narrowed a small set of strategic priorities and have completed the first chapter of an enterprise-wide racial equity action plan, focusing on how we do our own work. And it's really important for us to recognize the uniqueness of this kind of approach compared to other jurisdictions in centering our strategic planning unapologetically on racial equity. The council called for this plan in the resolution for Race and Equity in 2017, and this is a critical first step in moving this forward. You know, I just want to acknowledge that the success of this plan's implementation hinges on citywide buy-in and participation. Thus far, has given us every reason to be hopeful. And to ensure that we are moving this work forward, I want to make sure that we are taking the appropriate steps to move towards defining what is core and what is not, so that we can ensure we're appropriately aligning resources in the long term to support this ambitious work. So I want to offer a staff direction to direct the Budget Office to develop a definition for work that is core to the provision of city services and provide recommendations to the council on how to categorize the city's work as core based on that definition. And if that is the, the end of that report, I would make a motion that we receive and file this update given by Ms. Larson and Ms. Marsh Stevens. And all of those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. That item carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. And our second discussion item today is approval of the council and committee calendars for the years 2019, 2020, and 2021. I'll invite the city clerk, Mr. Casey Carl, to give that presentation.
Hello, Mr. Carl. Good afternoon, Madam President. Members of the committee, as noted, I'm Casey Carl, have the privilege of serving as city clerk. And with support from council leadership this year, the clerk's office is bringing forward proposed calendars covering the remainder of the current council term, that is for years 2019, 2020, and 2021. Copies should be at your desk. The calendars show dates and times for regular meetings of the full council and for each of its standing committees, as well as for our independent audit and executive committees. The calendars were prepared using longstanding guidelines which respect the observance of various holidays, significant dates, and other known events and activities. A total of 23 regular meetings of the full city council have been programmed in for each of these calendar years, which corresponds to the same number of regular meetings held in each year during the prior four-year term. Within each two-week cycle, the dates and times for regular committee meetings were identified in conjunction with respective chairs of those committees, and these generally matched the dates and times that were used this past year. The one major change that's been programmed into all three calendars is that regular meetings for the Public Safety and Emergency Management Committee have been set for Wednesday mornings in the first week of the regular two-week cycle. This allowed us to proactively program meetings for the Budget Committee using the additional time on alternate Thursday afternoons. Staff believes that this change is a value add since budget meetings are usually later added in the year, which necessitates significant adjustments to the schedule. So this way, we've incorporated the Budget Committee at the very beginning of the year and each year across all three years that remain in this term. The dates for regular meetings of all of our standing committees and for the two independent committees are reflected by a signed color shown in the legend at the bottom of the page. The city observes 11 holidays, which are highlighted and with stars and detailed in the legend at the bottom of each page. In addition, the council has identified several significant dates when no city meetings or events are to be scheduled, and these are reflected on the calendars with an X. There are a few instances where this restriction is simply on no meetings or events in evening hours. Those are reflected on the calendars with an asterisk. Where those dates create scheduling conflicts, council and committee meetings have been adjusted accordingly. And for your reference, a listing of the significant dates that are observed have been attached with the draft calendars at your desk. At council's recommendation this year, staff also have eliminated regular meetings or events from the Mondays which precede the General Election Day in years where regular elections are scheduled. There are no regular elections scheduled in 2019, so this really only has an impact for calendar years 2020, 2021. A total of seven Ward Work Weeks have been included in all three calendars. This aligns with the same number of such weeks over the past eight years. These weeks are shaded in gray on the draft calendars. Last year, the Ward Work Week previously held in March was changed to April in order to align with the Minneapolis School District's spring break, and we have repeated that for each of the three years reflected in the draft calendars before you. Finally, the calendars reflect the dates of the two annual conferences hosted by the National League of Cities. Those dates are shown in parentheses. Each year, they occur in March and November. Staff requests a favorable consideration of this committee of the draft calendars as have been added with the direction that the clerk's office publish and post these calendars in accordance with Minnesota Statute's Chapter 13D.04 subdivision 1, which serves as public notice, and also to update and maintain these calendars throughout the coming years as necessary to accommodate the needs of council. And with that, I've concluded my presentation and would be happy to stand for questions.
Thank you, Mr. Carl. Are there any questions or comments? Seeing none.
Thank you.
I will move this item for approval. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. That item carries. And then our next item, we will receive the reports from the standing committees on matters to be considered at the full city council at our regular meeting this coming Friday. We will begin with the Economic Development and Regulatory Services Committee chaired by Councilmember Goodman.
Thank you, Madam Vice President. There are 18 items that are coming forward tomorrow for approval. Items 1, 2, 3, and 4 are liquor licenses and sidewalk cafes. I'll note that the committee very much enjoyed hearing about item number 4, which is an axe-throwing business that's opening, and we thought it was somewhat humorous, but apparently not, that they would be able to serve liquor while people were throwing axes. And we had a long discussion about that. Councilmember Fletcher's going to be trying it out for us, but I did think it was an interesting conversation. Item number 5 is the levy for special assessments relating to nuisance conditions, so these are the assessments for people that have been unable to pay for things that we then assessed against their properties, and there's a lot of them. Item 6 are changes in our requirements for administrative citations ordinance. Item 7 are the liquor license approvals. 8 are business license approvals. 9 is business license renewals. There's a lot of those, 42. 10 is the gambling license approvals. 11 is a license settlement conference as, and then item 12 is the NCAA Final Four Designated Large Event Zone. Item 13 are our Minneapolis Pathways Grant Agreements, and you can look and see who's getting grants under our pathways grants agreements for next year. Item 14 is a contract amendment with Hennepin County with regard to MFP and training. Item 15 is a contract amendment for information technology employment and training services. Item 16 are grants from DED for projects in the city. Item 17, our grant, is a grant application to the Environmental Response Fund. And item 18 is a rental license renewal. With that, I'm happy to answer any questions, 1 through 18.
Thank you, Councilmember Goodman. Are there any questions or comments? No? Before we go to the next report, I do want to admittedly late acknowledge we were joined by Councilmember Westerme. And then our next committee report is the Enterprise Committee chaired by Councilmember Palmasano.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I wanted to point out that we had a really fantastic and robust State of Data Report in our Enterprise Committee this cycle. It's also our last Enterprise Committee meeting of the year, so I'll visit with you individually on the things that I think could come from that. The seven items that are slotted for approval from the Enterprise Committee on Friday is, item number 1 is a contract with Hennepin County for use of imaging software, a pictometry license. Item number 2 is a compliance management system for the Civil Rights Department. Item number 3 is a contract to provide e-discovery and redaction systems. Item number 4 is a contract for teleconferencing services. Item number 5 is a contract to conduct our business impact analysis across the city enterprise pursuant to an audit about our own disaster recovery planning. Items number 6 and 7 are contracts with multiple vendors to establish IT consulting pools for various needs. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Chair Palmasano. Are there any questions? Seeing none, our next committee report is the Housing Policy and Development Committee, and that is chaired by Councilmember Gordon.
Thank you very much, Vice President Jenkins. The Housing Policy and Development Committee is going to be bringing forward 13 items for consideration. The first four are land sales, all to properties in North Minneapolis. The fifth item is a modification to our tax increment financing plans. This would be to increase the TIF budgets for affordable housing. Sixth item is giving exclusive development rights for the Satori Project to Pinnacle And it's denying a waiver for payment of holding costs associated with those exclusive development rights. The seventh item is a resolution approving the decertification of the Portland Place Tax Increment Financing District. The eighth item is approving exclusive development rights for the development at 628 Franklin Avenue East to Divine or an affiliate. The ninth item is authorizing staff to continue with their project analysis for the authorization for the Redwell Apartments. This would be for tax increment financing assistance. The 10th item, which we are sending forward without recommendation, is approving developers to participate in our Home Ownership Works Program. We may have a, I may be moving forward a recommendation tomorrow based on conversations that I'm having with my colleagues and CPED staff. The 11th item is preliminary reservation of the 2019 low-income housing tax credits. This is approving $1.5 million for the projects at Maya Commons and Amber Apartments. And the 12th item is approving our 2018 Affordable Housing Trust Fund awards. There are nine of those. I encourage people to take a look at that on their agendas. I won't read through them all right now. And the 13th and final item is authorizing staff to continue with an analysis of the Portland at Third Apartments to determine if tax increment financing assistance is appropriate. Happy to answer any questions now, or take any comments on any of those items.
Are there any questions? Thank you, Councilmember Gordon. Our next committee report is the Public Health, Environment, Civil Rights, and Engagement Committee chaired by Councilmember Cunningham.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I have, the Public Health, Environment, Civil Rights, and Engagement Committee will be bringing forward 10 items for consideration at Friday's city council meeting. The first is the submitting a grant application to the U.S. Department of Health and Human Services for a grant $4.87 million over a five-year period, really to be digging into infant mortality in the black community. The second is authorizing the submittal of a grant application to the Minnesota Department of Health in the amount of $4.6 million over four years for the evidence-based home visiting program to improve the outcomes for pregnant, pregnant parents and families. The third is approving updates to the Minneapolis Healthy Food Policy to be in line, alignment with the Fit Well standards. The number four is Memorandums of Understanding with the United States and the State of Minnesota Departments of Labor to promote compliance with minimum wage laws in Minneapolis. Number five is a contract with SETOOL for collaborative enforcement of labor standards. This is an exciting contract because it is really thinking outside of the box in terms of how we engage in enforcement around workers' rights, rather than the city coming in trying to engage with to engage with folks directly, really building relationships with community-based organizations who have built the trust to be able to have folks feel more comfortable to let them know and therefore us know when their rights are being violated. The number six is the Workplace Advisory Committee appointments. Number seven is the 2018 One Minneapolis Fund funding recommendations. This is around being able to diversify the City of Minneapolis's boards and commissions, as well as the neighborhood associations. I want to make a quick note that I'm excited to see that there are two organizations that work with trans folks and queer folks on the list. Number eight is a donation of travel and lodging expenses for Bloomberg American Health Summit. Nine is authorizing a contract with Tree Trust in the amount of $100,000 for tree planting services. And number 10 is authorizing a one-year extension of the existing Americans with Disabilities Act action plan and directing NCR staff to report back to the Peace Committee in October 2019 with an updated three-year plan. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Chair Cunningham. There is a question or comment from Councilmember Palmasano.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I wanted to note that I appreciate the Healthy Food Policies Consideration and Peace Committee. That's something that I serve on our council as the wellness executive for the City of Minneapolis. And after it went through that committee, there are some...I don't see substantial changes, but minor changes made through the PRG Policy Review Group at our city, so I might be bringing forward some very minor changes to the meeting tomorrow, and we'll work to substitute that in at the time. Thanks.
Thank you. Our next committee report is the Transportation and Public Works Committee chaired by Councilmember Wright.
Thank you, Madam Vice President. The committee will be forwarding 15 items. Items 1, 2, and 3 are assessments for sewer service line repair, street light operations, and street maintenance assessments, in that order. Item 4 is the sidewalk construction permit ordinance adjustment. Item 5 is a series of items relating to the safety, training, and training service vendor pool. Item 6 is the...and 7 are contract amendments for operations...typical operations of the department. Item 8 is the levy for various public works department special assessments. 9 is the alley easement deed from Wells Fargo for a portion of their property at Humboldt Avenue South. Item 10 is the orange line bus rapid transit station name change per the request of the community. Item 11 is the Metropolitan Airports Commission Preliminary Capital Improvement Program, comments that our staff will be forwarding to that body. And the final four items, 12, 13, 14, 15, are all accepting bids for standard operations of the department. I'll stand for questions.
Are there any questions? Thank you, Chair Wright. The next committee report is the Ways and Means Committee chaired by Councilmember Worsame.
Thank you, Madam Vice President. The Ways and Means Committee has 11 items to bring forth to the council's attention. Items number 1, 2, and 3 are legal settlements. Item number 4 is a grant award from the Minnesota Homeland Security and Emergency Management for Police Bomb Disposal Unit. Item number 5 is a one-time transfer of cash balance from the parking fund to the general fund. Item number 6 is 2018 Tenant Remedy Act assessments. Item number 7 is a contract amendment with Maya, Scherer, and Rock Castle LTD for architect and engineering of record design services for the new public service building project. Item number 8 is a bid for concrete steel installation and waterproofing for the new public service building project. Item number 9 is a contract amendment with Backbone Enterprises, Inc. for cybersecurity review. Item number 10 is an appointed position in the Public Works Department, and this is for the Deputy Director of Public Works Business Administration. And item number 11 is a collective bargaining agreement, construction equipment operators' unit from 2018 through 2020, and I stand happily for any questions.
Thank you, Chair Worsame. Are there any questions or comments? Seeing none, our next committee report is the Zoning and Planning Committee, and that chair is Councilmember Schrader.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Zoning and Planning Committee, as will be bringing forward six items for approval. First is the granting of an appeal for a conditional use permit at 501 and 511 11th Street South, 11th Avenue South. The second is the granting of an appeal for a variance at 4357 Minnehaha Avenue. The third is the granting of a utility easement vacation for 277 12th Avenue North. The fourth is the approving of a rezoning and vacation at 2210 and 2301 Oliver Avenue North, 2104 and 2106 23rd Avenue North, and 2027, 2029, 2033 West Broadway. Number 5 is the approval of a rezoning for 2801 and 2801 and 1/2 Californey Street Northeast. And the final one is the approving of a rezoning and alley vacation for 854, 902, and 904 14th Avenue Northeast. I'll stand for any questions.
Thank you, Chair Schrader. Are there any questions or comments? Seeing none, the next committee report is the Executive Committee, and that report will be given by the...by Councilmember Gordon.
The minority leader.
Okay. I've had a huge discussion. I'm not in favor of that framing of language, but it's your choice.
Okay, sorry about that. The other party's leader. Anyway, seriously, there is one item that the Executive Committee is bringing forward, and that's the reappointment of the police chief. And we're being...they request us to refer that to the Public Safety and Emergency Management Committee and to hold a public hearing on November 29.
Are there any questions or comments? So that completes our committee reports. You know, I did want to just acknowledge...you acknowledged the meeting on November 29, the Public Safety and Emergency Management Meeting, which will be November 29 at 1:30. And there will be opportunities for the community to speak about the issues that they are concerned about related to public safety. And, you know, I want to acknowledge that we recently had a police-involved shooting here in the city, and I know myself and my colleagues are deeply concerned about that. And we will be discussing that topic, as well as topics related to mental health providers and how we address people's...people who contact the police seeking help and yet not end up not receiving the types of help that they are seeking. And so, want to make sure that the public is aware to please to come on November 29 and help us to, well, share their opinions and help us to identify ways that we can improve accountability for our police department.
I am sure that all due respect, we keep coming here, asking you all to address these situations with urgency. For this man, Travis Jordan, to be killed under these circumstances is absolutely egregious and unconscionable. And earlier in the year, when we found out, first of all, we requested mental health services for people in the community in lieu of only having the police respond. And many of us reside in North Minneapolis who made those requests. And when the program rolled out, we found out that North Minneapolis wasn't on the list. And I know that I personally, when I read the Star Tribune article about it, tagged many of the city council members and said, "How come? This is not in North Minneapolis. We have need of these services. People's lives are in danger." And there were several city council members who said, "Oh, I know. We need it in North, but the resources haven't been there." This is a form of racism and discrimination, and it is causing people's lives to be taken and is unacceptable. So how many times do we have to keep coming back before you all approach these issues with a sense of urgency? We know you have your processes. We sat here, we listened to all the reports, but getting to the heart of the matter is this issue of police violence impacting our community and the lack of accountability. After we lost Thurman Levens, we came here and we demanded a new system to be put in place to make sure that police officers are being held accountable, that they have de-escalation training going on. And now, here we are, nine to six months later, with another person being killed. And many of you didn't even know what happened, but how did the Star Tribune know? How does the police have the right and the authority to leak information to the Star Tribune, details that they decide to leak, but you all don't know what happened going on? So what does that say to us as a public as far as having confidence in the processes that are in place and making sure that people are safe and making sure that the BCA is not just continually being used in these situations? And they are a shield so that the chief, who I respect, but the chief can say, "Oh, my hands are tied. I don't know what's going on because I turned it over to the BCA," which means that you all may not know what's going on, and the public may not know what's going on. And we know that the BCA has hardly ever, in its history, held police officers accountable for shooting and killing civilians. So these are the systems and the processes that are concerning to us. It is hard to believe that there is a sense of urgency from this committee when we haven't seen any real traction as we keep coming back, making demands, shutting things down. We shouldn't have to come to that. We are simply trying to preserve the lives of the people in our city, and we're asking you all to care about those people's lives. So that's why we're here. It's a few of us, but at the same time, we're here because we care. And even when there's not urgency, we're still working on these issues, but we need you all to step up and to do more. And I know you might say your hands are tied because the mayor has oversight of the police, but at the same time, when we were here over the summer, you all were trying to put the proposal together and get more power, and there were questions about what level of power you all have. And I'm not sure who since then has really dug into that, to see the scope of the power that city council has to take responsibility for what's going on. And we know that it's just a matter of time before someone else gets killed. So I'm really asking you to take this seriously. We have Matt Moebert here, who is a pastor of the local church, who also wants to say a few words about this.
You know, we are definitely taking this issue seriously. We have a scheduled meeting to really hear from the community, from pastors, from faith leaders, from community members who have been impacted by these issues. And I would hope that we can keep that process going. And certainly, I am willing to talk to anybody individually, including yourself and the pastor that you just mentioned, and as well as many others. And so, you're welcome to come back on November 29 and share your thoughts and ideas with this committee at that...with the Public Safety Committee at that time.
I am sure this is not just a situation for the Public Safety Committee. This affects the viability of our entire city. This affects tourism in our city. This affects feelings of safety in our city. This affects how our budget is being expended, where we keep seeing the mayor propose more police officers, but yet we're being told that there's not enough money to expand the Mental Health Co-Responder Program to North Minneapolis. So this is a matter for the entire committee, and we know, of course, there's public safety that might operate in a silo. But we are asking everybody on this committee to take responsibility and to stop rubber-stamping processes that we know do not work and lack transparency and lack accountability. It's unacceptable. If this were your relative who was shot and killed, you wouldn't be waiting until the 29th to come to a meeting and hear about it. You would, I would think, have a sense of urgency in your heart and despair that someone's life was taken under these circumstances. And again, not the first person. And for those who've been on this council for a long time, you know that this has been going on for decades. And what have you actually done about it beyond having meetings? So this is real for us. This is not just come to another meeting and we'll hash it out. You guys have seen the recommendations time and time again, and they have not been implemented. And we're very frustrated. Shouldn't be happening in Minneapolis.
Thank you for sharing your concerns, your deep concerns. I will say I share those same concerns, and we are working hard to address those issues.
Madam Chair, what specifically are you doing? With all due respect, you may...I don't know if you can agree with this, but it would be nice to hear what specifically has taken place since Thurman Levens was killed to address these issues. And I come in peace, but I'm asking genuinely, what have people done?
We have worked on developing a body-worn camera policy to ensure that we can understand what happens at these events, continuously trying to figure out what are the roles and responsibilities that...and oversight that the council has over the police, as well as working with the mayor to address these issues. I do believe that we are going to be able to figure out ways to expand the Mental Health Co-Responder Program throughout the city to address some of those concerns, and then look at ways to ensure that those mental health providers can go on the types of calls where people's lives are potentially in danger. There are other items that we are working on. We are really wanting to hear from community to understand some of the ideas that are present there and try to incorporate those into the work that we're doing as well.
What's happened with the recommendations that people made?
Those recommendations are under consideration, and we're working to try to figure out how to bring them to fruition.
So one of the things that will be helpful is the timeline from you all about these issues as they arise, a timeline for when you plan to address them. The other thing that we're asking for is a public autopsy of after someone is killed, having the chief and whomever else come and talk about policies and procedures publicly that were followed or not followed, and what they plan to do when they see holes in the system or policies that were not followed. That never happens. We are just expected to take everyone's word for it and walk away, just like after we came over the summer and spoke with a sense of urgency after Thurman Levens was killed. And I just don't feel that enough has happened since then, and now we have another life spent taken.
I understand, and I respectfully ask that we are going to adjourn this meeting, and then you and I can have this conversation afterwards. Thank you. And seeing that there is no further business before this committee, this meeting is adjourned.